Okay, meeting to order six thirty-one, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Everyone please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the State of Arizona, the very symbol that perfect impression united. All right, um. We'll start with the the board introducing themselves and welcome everybody here this evening. All around let the board introduce themselves, and then I would like the audience to introduce themselves. Mr. Casper?
Randy Casper.
Bernie Lou Kern?
Casey Donis.
Shana.
Elisa Gell.
Amy Robot.
Andrew.
Essie Kelch.
Daisy Paris.
Shannon.
Abby.
Bernie Cruz.
Dennis.
Bernie.
Drew.
Bobby Floyd.
Jimmy.
Charlie.
I'm watching.
Jimmy Rice.
Miss Junior.
Ellen.
So.
Chris.
Kirsten.
Mike.
Mike.
Thank you, Floyd.
Adam.
Corazal.
And Liz.
I'm ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Susan Robinson.
Get everybody. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we have uh. The table of the agenda. There's no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll make a motion to. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Okay.
Both say. Okay. Everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the uh May nineteenth meeting, there's no additions or corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Any kind of correction? I have a question. How can I be said? But the way that it was written for. And so can I at this part or do I need to?
Well, it should be a board action, but. Uh there's a motion on the floor. They have a second? They moved. Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Both say. Okay, um, I asked that hearing from the delegation be moved up because uh we knew that there was gonna be several people here today. So um we have a lot of people that wish to speak as per board policy. Uh the time allowed for this is thirty minutes. Um. If everybody would like to speak on the anybody that wants to speak on the coaching thing right now will be allowed two minutes. Or if you want to select a representative to speak on your behalf, I will allow them um ten minutes to speak.
What what's the allotment if if it's two minutes, two minutes apiece?
Yes.
Yes. I think that would be better than than than.
Okay. If that's the consensus, then um I will open it up at this point in time for um discussion or comments on coaching. Um, Miss Dennis will be the timer and she will warn you when you have fifteen seconds left. Okay, and um I want to hear from Mister Carlo Gonzalez first. And if you come up here please. So that we can get you on the camera any better audio. Thank you, sir.
Ron. Hi, my name is Carl and and I have a grandson that plays on this Maxwell Bears basketball team. And this team was going somewhere, the coach had, they went three years straight to state. They didn't bring the coach back. We, you know, we're 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 here for the boys, most of these parents. And we believe that coach deserved a chance, not three years and then get rid of him. You know, these co- these players looked up to the coach, they wanted to play for him. And now that we got a new coach, none of them wanna really play. You know, and it's not fair for the kids, they should, the school, um, the administration should have done better. And let at least, you know, they were thinking about hiring a new coach or some, give these kids a chance to talk and speak also. You know, and when my son played here, they wanna stay tight. And when we had a athletic director that was would pay attention to these kids, they were awesome, awesome kids. We had great kids back then, and these kids are great here. But it's real, I feel like the administration is not backing our kids up. And we've, you know, you're gonna hear a lot more of this and and we feel like we need an explanation. You know, about getting the coach, you know, why they did it. So like, okay.
Just, I would would like to say one thing, um, as per board policy, uh when it comes to this discussion in open, open public comment, uh personal attacks upon board members, uh staff personnel and other persons in attendance or absence of individuals who are addressed that the board are discouraged. Presenters are cautioned that statements or representations concerning others that convey an unjustified unfavorable impression may be subject to subject the presenter to civil action or defamation, and that's per board policy.
If there was any files.
There wasn't, I I meant to read that in the beginning and I I failed to do so. Yeah, I wasn't, wasn't making that accusation. Procedure on my part, so I thank you, Mister Gonzalez, appreciate your your comments and um. I would uh at this time like to hear from Isaiah Taven.
Uh hi, I would just like to say that a lot of us on my team, like play for Maxwell, a lot of us grew with our former coach. And you know, really got attached to him. He would take us, he would take his, not take time out of his day just to, you know, let us in the gym for a couple more hours or take us a, or put in that time and effort. And I feel like he was one of the best coaches in Mexico. I mean, that's my own opinion, but some but I feel like I was just really attached to him, I mean, he was been here since I was in fourth grade. And I always, he he helped me grow. Like, took the time out of his day to help me on the sidelines when I couldn't even notice you type. But. Yeah.
Thank you. Open Floyd?
So uh I would like to talk on how Jimmy was probably the most dedicated anybody's ever been is. For me, and honestly, he would take, he spent so much money and time and preparation into putting into us so we can be successful. And because of what he did, and then he just like kind of now there's no explanation on why he got fired, no one knows why he got fired. No explanation on that, but also I feel that rival rival schools, rival communities who are also part of the committee that chose who the coach was. And I don't think that that's fair, because some of them obviously had uh passed with Jimmy and some of them have known Jimmy and they're from rival schools and they might not like Jimmy, so that's pretty biased. And that Jimmy, yeah, he's probably the most dedicated coach. He's one of the most, probably one of the most best coaches that uh Maxwell have ever seen. You know, he has, he's gone to state three years running now and the year before he, and no one, we didn't even get close to state the year before Jimmy was here, but Jimmy came in and he just dominated. We got the number four seed and freshman stage. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Maybe. Then in uh Perilla?
I'm gonna just say one, Jimmy, he was a good coach, um. If he did something wrong in games or practices, he would pull us aside, tell us how to fix it. He would tell us how to, well, do it better, he would tell us uh during practices, if we weren't having, if we had problems with the other, our teammates, he would have us find a way to resolve it. He would um try and make sure we had good team chemistry. He would always like make us uh um. He would pull his own time, he would during summer, would make us have us run during practices, have the gyms, bring us to games far away, spend his own money. And then he just, I really like that, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
And Floyd?
I I I'd like to start by saying number one especially to Mister Dolu, she's which is like. And I wish her husband, I wish Mister Dolu, because this is completely, you know disrespect the the kids respect for Jimmy building this team, and and I've witnessed it, I've witnessed Jimmy building this team. Uh I won't go on further than that, I gotta get my reading last of them, right? But I am so. I'd like to make a short statement to the board. This will be the third time in a row that our school board has completely disregarded the opinions of the community and the students of our school. It started with COVID restrictions, while other schools in our district complied with minimum COVID restrictions, our board went above and beyond to appease our oppressive state government. Instead of listening to the concerns of our community and more importantly, our kids. Secondly, our board installed feminine product dispensers in our boys bathrooms without consulting our community and blame the state when no other no other school in our district complied with that, we're the only ones in our district that complied with that. So why did the state force their head? Because their school board had a backbone, and I'm sorry, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be, I'm not attacking, but I am saying like, where's our backbone, why don't, why don't we stand up for our community? So now we come to this decision, unconsulted again with parents, children or community, we allowed our neighboring rivals to determine who our coach will be. A coach was ousted. We weren't explaining why, a coach that has been to state three years running with no explanation to parents, kids or community. I think it's time our elected members pay attention to the people that elected them. If not, maybe it's time for a change. It's these kids need to be heard, the community needs to hear. You guys are all elected officials here, right? And I I don't, I don't feel like anybody in this room has been heard. Keep my hands up.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me a second.
Thirty-four. Um, my, while superintendents have the authority to make hiring decisions and school board's role is typically consider and vote on recommendations, there are a couple of important points that need to be considered in this process. The first one is fairness and transparency. A transparent and fair hiring process is important for maintaining public confidence in our school. If there is a perception that less qualified candidates are being hired, it could lead to concerns about favoritism and lack of a clear process, which I feel there are examples of lack of a clear process when the position was open to begin with, there were multiple reasons given why. Um, one was restructuring of teams, which I don't feel there was actually restructuring of the team, they were the same as last year. Um. Another thing is the committee of people from surrounding schools, and I know some of you might be rolling your eyes on that, but to me, it's kind of important, and I know you guys know the history of Maxwell and basketball here, and uh it's important to everybody, and I'd say I could sit on a committee for a different school and it would be hard for me to be bi- unbiased. So, um. The other thing that needs to be considered is the impact on the school and the students. Hiring a less qualified coach in the eyes of the majority of the students and the parents in the community could potentially have negative consequences for the athletic program, student athletes and the overall school environment, and we're seeing this already with some kids wanting to transfer out of here. And so um our goal for our sports program should be to our student athlete. Um, as a teacher, I agree that academic should come first, but as a parent of five boys and a husband that eat, sleep and breathe basketball, it's important in my house, it's important in this community, obviously it's important to our kids, and I think that they have not been heard, and it saddens me a little bit, um. I don't think it's been fair or transparent at all. Bye.
Floyd? Okay, uh, on the table?
I don't know how I leave without those three, um. The other night it was stated that it was supposed to be interwines with the coaches at first, but happened to that because I don't think any of them got asked if they wanted to take over each other's jobs. Um, I think if you would have done that, we would have never got to this point. Honestly. You guys can sit here and make remarks to the kids when they go places, make them feel like they did something wrong when they didn't. These kids have a right to be heard. They have a right to stand up for what they believe in and who they care about. And I know some people, oh, um, they're making fools of themselves and everything like that. And I know those same people sat there and did it when they didn't feel like their kids didn't play. So that's all be fair and how you would really feel about your own kid and how far you would go to protect your kid and what they deserve. Like I, like Isaiah said, they've been with him for, since fourth grade. Some of these kids have been together since that kindergarten. And to have it ripped apart because you guys or you or anybody thought it was right without asking is very disrespectful. Like Flan said, you guys are elected officials. People are trusting you to protect our kids, people are trusting you to protect our kids. People are trust in the teachers to protect our kids. Some teachers were like, let him go, who cares if they transfer out? One person was called and it was told, where, not even how can we change it, how can we fix it? That shows how much you care about our kids. That right day, that day. And from then on has showed who cares about our kids and who doesn't? Because anybody would stand up for a kid, even if they are not theirs. And put their life on the line, and if I can't trust you to do that, then you don't need to be in the school system, that's all I want to say.
Interview?
Okay, so I just wanted to ask uh if you guys listen to uh my teammates, because my teammates thought that Jim was a really good coach and he wasn't just a coach during basketball season, he was a coach all year. Really like helped us all year. And I don't think there was a reason you guys fired him, him. Yeah. Just walked Jimmy back because he's been teaching us since fourth grade. He taught all of us.
You? Si, interview? Si, yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just. My name's Essie Kelch Hill and um I really, I guess I can't really say much um uh other than my experience, you know, and you know where I've come from, um in uh dealing with these kind of things, uh like people have already said, the lack of procedures, the hidden agendas. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that's, you know, not being answered and it's causing like discord and mayhem in the community, this is like all these people are here, so there's obviously some sort of dysfunction going on and um the, you know, like these people put their faith in you guys and uh I I'm from Santa Fe, so you know, my kids go to school here and uh eight years ago when we broke away from the Raton because that's where, you know, the mother of their children lives is in Raton, and we broke away from the school systems in Raton to come here in Maxwell because, you know, things were being, choices and decisions were being made for the community and the kids, like to empower them, it's about connection and um, you know, I just don't see it, like, I don't, uh, it seems like it's been slipping away over the years and um, you know, I don't know, I can't speak for what happens behind the scenes. Um, and you know, I can only say from the outside looking in and you know, there's some discord and, you know, people's um choices are clouded and uh, you know, goes beyond just these kids and and the and the students or the coaches, the coaching situation that, you know, has been going on, um.
Fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds, okay, and I'll just wrap it up with, you know, that power or empowering kids can be made with you people here sitting here, you guys can change your ways, you know what I mean? Maybe uh think back on the choices that you guys have been making over the past few years, you know? Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon first? I don't need my glasses.
This ended it really good.
Uh, my concern tonight addressing the board is in two parts, um, due to the recent decisions made by our administration, so I'm gonna speak on the first one, which is coaching.
And then the other one, let's deal with that one, it's, because it's on the agenda.
Okay.
And we'll deal with that one then.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, at the last school board meeting on May nineteenth, concerns about the listing of all coaching positions was brought up. Um, during that meeting, there were several uh reasons or excuses given why our positions were uh relisted. Um, I've been a coach for three years and out of those three years, my position has been listed twice already. Um, last year I was told, and I have the book right here, that we're gonna follow this handbook right here, and we were gonna be evaluated based on the evaluation system that Miss Robo came up with. That evaluation only took place once, I have my evaluation in here and nowhere does it state I was not performing my duties as a coach. But yet my coaching position was still posted. Um, I believe that um there is an ulterior agenda that does not include obviously the current coaches that were coaching. Yes, I got my coaching position back, but I was told by Miss Robo when she called me that I was selected, I don't know what that means. Um, if there were other people and I didn't have to interview, I don't know, it just, she just said I was selected to continue my coaching uh position, which I'm thankful for because I do believe that I uh do my very best at trying to improve my skills of being a coach and trying to help these students when they need help at any point in time. Um, and I do believe that the other coaches that were um in position did the same thing as I do. Um, I believe that if there is a valuation tool and you use it properly, um, then that's the tool that you should use to determine if we're performing our duties correctly, and that tool was not used. Um, I believe that, yes, they said that there was a reconstruction of um the the teams, but again, I'm gonna have to say what Becky said, no reconstruction different from last year, and we already had a meeting about the co-ed team. It was at the beginning of the year, so um I just think that there are some things that again are being done that um have a a agenda other than the agenda that you should have um for the board and for administration, that it's about our fans. And that's not the decisions being made.
Thanks. Please. In person.
Hey, Spears, um. I think the whole reason this coaching change is occurring is because it's been occurring and it's still got let go. And I think they've been trying to work on it to get it done, and they worked on it and got it done. And the whole reason is because that gentleman sitting right there. And the whole reason is because that gentleman sitting right there. And if you would have got rid of him when you got rid of Joe, we would not be sitting in this position today. So I think there is a lack in having a backbone and standing up what's right for the kids. Because you guys sit there and you listen to everything them kids said. And what they felt about Joe and Glassman. Not just Joe. It was both of them. So. I'm going to tell you that, that's where I think this is coming from. And I've been watching it happen. Since Tristan, since they left. They got it done. Thank you. Hope you have a great day.
Captain Trillo.
I would like to thank the board for. Uh, letting uh. People here today in the audience speak. I hope that you really listen to what they're telling you. Because what these extracurricular activities of these kids do has a lot to do how they perform in school. And what I'd like to, what I would like to know is what experience the coach, the coach that has been hired. What experience he has in um. To be chosen to coach the basketball team here in Maxwell. Over an experienced coach that has taken this um, school, this basketball team. To state for the last three years. There, I don't know if the uh, board knows that there was no criteria advertised in the contract for opening them. So I want you to know what exactly you're looking for. Look, uh, I would like to directly ask the board. To uh, have this, have your superintendent. To re-advertise the position for the Maxwell coach because I don't think it was properly. Thank you.
Like response to the old patients because we don't have that. Is there anybody else?
I, I have one more real quick thing.
Sorry.
Actually, I think you guys just made a mistake because on, on both sides. Boys and girls both, you let go of, of individuals that truly care about these kids. And went above and beyond. What a lot of coaches do, spend a lot of their own money, a lot of their own time. I think you guys made a mistake, which. Nah, I put it in a paper, but I guess.
Well. We're very specific, so, but Devon, go ahead. Devon Cruz.
Um, I'm not, I'm not up here for any given person. I just want to understand. So the area we live in relies on infrastructure. Business owners, ranchers, farmers, instructor. The boys running it, instructor. You change that, you change the instructor. Change your farmer hats, you change your rancher hats, you're going to ranch, you're going to farm. They were building. They were working for the state championship. They're working for more than one, also. Again, Maxwell being on the map more than once. And I can say as a state champ, as a senior, it's. It's fun and then it's not because you graduated anywhere. Let's take infrastructure away, especially as people. That stand on infrastructure. Business owners, ranchers, landowners. If you're an instructor bro. You have a break. So I understand why we would move the infrastructure out from under the boys. We started from the bottom and it's a, it's a better than. And if I had a question, if you answered. I'd be happy. Uh, I figured I hadn't been here. Made the choice. You know, now I don't have any more thoughts.
Anybody else? I'm going to give each of the board members an opportunity to. Not really uh. Keep it pretty short, but uh, if they have anything that they would like to say.
Uh, I just want to say that uh. As a board, uh, we do all. Personally, the, 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 the people. Um, both all the coaches and. The amazing position that you all have to know. On the safer, together, uh, behind uh.
I didn't understand it. If that was the question, I didn't understand.
Yeah. These are the board members. The chief council of the favor. The post, like the post group.
Can we make the decision?
Did you make the decision? You make most of the coaching decisions?
Yeah, as a group, as an administration.
It was, yeah, it was, it was discussed. It was discussed.
Were the, were the people that got selected, were they interviewed? All of them.
All the people that got picked for coaching were they interviewed?
If they haven't chosen, if they were applicants.
They were all interviewed?
If they were.
There was, if there was more than, if there was more than one applicant, then all the applicants were interviewed. There was only one applicant.
You're the same.
Thank you. Alright, we, we just returned from a school law conference. And there was various breakout sessions in that during that conference and stuff. And Casey attended. Particularly their one that dealt with. Open, Open Meetings Act and uh. Meeting uh. Criteria and. She has indicated to me that during, during the hearing from the delegation slash public comment that the board is. Not to respond to any comments. Um, we do thank everybody for their comment and your input. Um. This uh. Or will. Take it under consideration and stuff. We, we like hearing from the, the public, obviously. Um. But we will not be making any comments other than that. This time we'll be continuing on with our agenda. We thank.
When, when, when will you?
What?
When, when will you respond? Most. You want ever?
So.
So what happens now? So we will not study about the decisions or you guys get that to evolve?
The decisions have been made. And the board supports the decisions that were made. And they will stand. Moving on to consent agenda, business agenda.
So on the cash report, I have submitted um, all of the reimbursements. With the exception of our Title II funds, uh, those are for professional development. And you cannot seek reimbursement until the professional development has, has been completed. Um, and that will be August. So that will sit on the cash report as an outstanding balance. Um, the. Bank statements from the NMFA did not arrive until Thursday night at five o'clock and eight o'clock. So they're not part of the packet. Um, but I did want to let the board know that. Um, we did have our fraud filter catch another fraudulent ACH. It was an eighty dollar payment to P and M uh, that we were able to stop. Somebody probably just put the account number in wrong. Um. So other than that, the two bank statements reconciled with no problems and I'll bring the NMFA uh, to the June. With the June reports. Any questions on the expense vouchers? No? Think I just had two bars. Uh, one was the final allocation and the carryover notice. For Title One. And the second was actually voided because I did not need it after all. That's it. Um, and then I have um, completed. Our physical inventory. Um, and we have identified and found all but. I think it was fifteen items out of a thousand and ninety-eight. Um, so I will bring the reconciliation and certification to the board next month.
Pretty impressive.
Getting better.
Questions? I'll intervene in motion for the uh, budget adjustments.
Second.
Red. Jasper already done it. So second and right shot. All in favor of say aye? Both say. What will be asset disposal list? You want to take a motion? Casey second? Scally, all in favor of say aye? Both say. Moving on to all business project update.
And your packets is the project update from our project um, management company. We do have a page turner in Albuquerque with PSVA on Wednesday for the construction documents. From there, we should have a stand set of drawings and be able to apply for our building. And, and advertise the RFP for construction. That should go out the first week of July. As we did with the design professional RFP, we will require an onsite visit for any. Construction plan that plans to submit for the RFP. Just so that they can see physically what they're dealing with, where the plot of land is, what's available around Maxwell, where housing is for. Construction workers, all of that sort of thing. Uh, that worked out pretty well with the design professionals and getting those bids in. So we're going to follow that same process for the construction companies. The bids will be due by August fifth and we will bring a recommendation to the board at the August meeting to approve one of those bids. And then we'll go back to PSCOC for them to approve that bid and actually afford the phase two construction.
I mean.
That's since it's an agenda item, keep, keep.
Uh, I just. I think that, that's great, that uh, I see that too again. Um, that you guys are. Getting the funding for this school and I remember when Atkins went up to the Capitol to go talk to the, you know, for the bus barn and all that and. That's really cool, but when you guys. When I hear things like there's teachers not caring about kids leaving and my kids are self-employed, three kids that go to this school, this is. Community that's not very big. So like, we should definitely be like promoting to get kids here like. With programs like Cathy Had, Jimmy Had and the, the, you know. That have results and that are compassionate. It takes a special kind of person to have compassion for their students. For their athletes. And that's what it is. It's a student athlete. So a lot of like. Like, why are you going to chase kids off and build a brand new school? You're going to have a big brand new school empty? I mean, that just doesn't make no sense to me. Like, it's not rocket science. Like, why, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Shol?
Yep, that was it.
Want to riff?
So at the last board meeting, um, I was asked to. Kind of explain a little bit more in detail about the reduction force. Um, so as this is a live streamed public meeting, I cannot discuss staff by name, so I'll only be referring to those as individual positions. Due to a projected shortfall in the budget due to declining enrollment and expected federal fund reductions. The decision was made to reduce by two point five FTEs. One of those was a part-time counseling position, one was a full-time BA and one was an elementary teacher. Next year's enrollment is projected at seventy-seven students with thirty-eight students in grades K through six. And thirty-nine students in gate grades K, I'm sorry, grades. Let me say that again, thirty-eight K through six, thirty-nine seven through twelve. When considering which positions to riff, we looked at class sizes and program requirements from PED for district accreditation. One of the factors in PED's accreditation matrix is whether or not a district offers all of the required courses at each level. Remember that for secondary grades, teachers are required to be licensed in their individual content area for students to receive credits towards graduation. After the riff positions were made, there are six full-time teachers in the secondary building for those thirty-nine students. And five full-time teachers and two full-time BAs for the elementary grades for those thirty-eight students. Two years ago, the high school lost a teacher when she moved out of state and that position was not replaced. This caused a reduction in the FTE for the secondary building at that time. Looking at our child find numbers and the declining birth rate in Coolfax County, we do not anticipate a larger kindergarten class coming in in the next few years. In the upcoming school year, even when considering the riff of an elementary teacher. No classroom in elementary is over ten students and this is still the lowest. Pupil teacher ratio in our region of High Plains districts. A community member spoke at our last board meeting suggesting specific positions that could be cut back in order to allow the district to keep an elementary teacher. While these suggestions have been taken under consideration, they are not feasible. One of those positions suggested is paid out of grant funds that cannot be allocated to another program. And thus cutting it back would not result in a savings to the district. One of the other positions is needed to meet several required courses under PED accreditation consideration. And also actually generates additional revenue for the district for that teacher's specific licensure. Given the increased mental health needs in our community in the past few years, it is not in our best interest to cut both our mental health provider. And our physical health provider. We did have a custodian quit and rather than hiring a full-time replacement. We are addressing that opening with other staff picking up extra hours and extra duties. However, when a position is cut, it does not usually zero out that line in the budget. There are still costs associated with those job duties. For example, the EA that was cut was also our in-house sub. While we are saving that salary, our cost for subs will now rise. We still do not know what will happen at the federal level with federal grant funds. We are told that Title Two and Title Four will likely be eliminated. And other programs may be restructured and consolidated with additional cuts. According to state law, I cannot lawfully offer an employee a contract for the upcoming school year if there is not adequate funding to do so. And notice of no renewal has to be given at least fifteen days prior to the end of the school year. This is also best practiced ethically as it allows that teacher to be hired. This is also best practiced ethically as it allows that teacher to be hired with another district rather than waiting until the beginning of the school year when positions in other districts have already been filled. A riff is always a last resort and no district wants to lose teachers or staff. This is by far the worst part of my job and a decision that I don't want to make. In previous years, cuts have been able to happen as people voluntarily left the district. It just so happened that this year we had no retirements and no staff leaving, which left us with limited options to address that budget.
Thank you, Ms. Rabel. Since it's an agenda item, any of those individuals um, that, that had it on their form, if would like to speak in reference to that, Mr. Pierce?
Is it over the riff team?
Yeah. Um. Again, I'll give two minutes, please.
You have to holler at me, I can't hear.
Two minutes, Mr. Pierce.
That's why I'm so loud. I'm gonna hear myself on Casey Pierce, um. On your riffing, I just I don't understand your riffing on your elementary teacher when they teach one more than one subject. You know? And you already got two teachers in the school that are going to be teaching two classes. Already. Themself. So when you take, you know, you're not helping by getting rifted in state law, what's the state law and teachers teaching two classes? Do you pay them double salary or? You just tell them, here you go, here's your job, get her done? I mean. I don't understand that either. So there's different ways to get around besides getting one of your elementary teachers. That's where you, that's where you start from. Start from elementary. And your teachers are very important. They're gonna teach you in class. I don't, I don't care who says that whether you fell on the internet or whether you're in a classroom, you're gonna do the same? No. If you got somebody sitting there next to you helping you learn, you're gonna learn. I know, because I had hell learn. I ain't gonna learn on a damn computer. So anyway, I just, I don't know how you think you can put your teachers in that position to teach two jobs? And make another job where it probably shouldn't be. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pierce.
Oh, Ms. Rabel, you explained um, your reasoning for uh, ripping of uh, the different staff members. Um, and so I had a big speech prepared, but I'm just going off of your, what you said with class sizes. Um, you stated that within our surrounding district that we're, the district was small to class sizes, but I would have to disagree with that. I looked up Roy or it was Roy, yes, it was Roy, and they have class size, uh, seventy students in their district. So I don't think that their class sizes would be bigger than ours. Um, I also looked up Roy, just their staff and um, other duties were assigned to administration. Administration was not only the administrator, but they were also a teacher. They were also uh, um, uh, in charge of the special ed department, but you're, we don't look at any of that. Yes, I understand your job is important as a superintendent and I understand our administration's job is important as well, but why are you not picking up extra duties? Why is, why is it always looked at at the teacher level? There's other, you can all look at all the other districts too, but that was one I just pulled up. And they do have their administrators doing other jobs and being teachers in the classroom. There's all kinds of alternatives and I really am going to say again, I don't think those alternatives were looked at to try to save that elementary teacher when other people can pick up duties just as well as we can. Yes, like I said before, thank you for being very confident in our abilities. I'm pretty confident in my own. But I'm going to be teaching a combo class with no educational assistant. And how is that going to be beneficial to our students? Class sizes for our high school. I'm sorry, I walk into some classes and uh, they have four or five kids, just like I do. So I, I didn't think I had time limit being that it was on the agenda. I thought you said time limit only for a lot. I've been able to talk any other time of the school board meetings and not be given a time limit. It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. I didn't think so either.
Um, but again, it, it goes back to you don't want to listen to what anybody has to say. I'm a staff member. I have three students that I bring here to this school district. My brother explained to the, to the uh, point of three students coming here. Um, I know that um, you know, when they did come here, it was based on the fact that I supported um, this district and saying that they made good decisions that were based on our kids and I don't think that's happening anymore. I, how many of you have kids in our district? Just one? Right. So how can you base your decision on our students? If you don't have kids that go to school here, you can talk for your children that were here long ago. I can talk for my son too. He's going to college. But, but I'm not talking about those students long ago. I'm talking about now and what you're doing for our district now. Again, because it goes back to you are, you are voted in. And you're not making a decision that's best for our staff or students, sometimes not even best for our staff. And I don't see why not listening to us or, I mean, I guess I'm the only one talking, but I know everybody else feels that, but they can't talk because you want to shut them down in two minutes. Why would they come and express their feelings? And then to be retaliated against after I do talk, because it happens. I have proof. Lots of proof.
Like Mr. Rabel said, I mean, she explained, I think in, in great detail why the choices were made. And nobody up here.
That's a number of them, not it is.
No, nobody is on this board wants to riff staff member. That's the last thing we want to do. But when you are faced with tremendous budget cuts and declining enrollment and eighty-five, your percent of your budget is stacked. There's, we don't have any choice. We don't have a choice.
I think the manner of which they're being uh, taken the, yeah, are being uh, conducted is a big uh, reason why the community is speaking up too is because, you know, programs that were just recently created um, stayed and they cut an education, uh, of an educator's position, you know, uh, over physical education, you know, and that was just recently uh, made a position.
It's a requirement for accreditation.
Right, right. And that could be easily resolved in the educator's position. Within the, within the administration or the faculty or.
I, I, I appreciate your, your input and I appreciate the fact that individuals are taking the time to educate themselves, really truly do. The decision, the decision's been made. Uh, the board backs the decision. Said it's not one we want to make, but we are forced with or handed handed the cards that we have to make a tough decision and that decision's been made, so.
I'll take my two minutes.
Hi, I'm Ellen Gerard. I am actually one of the employees who was ripped. Um, I'm not here to talk about my own situation. Um, I just have a brief statement general wise um, about some things that I feel I've noticed my own personal experiences and observations in the last few years and the last four years, being new to this community. My husband's not new to this community. I am myself. Um, we do have a daughter here. And I just wanted to speak real briefly to that and for the sake of brevity and clarity, so I don't go rambling, I'm just going to read it to you. Um, and this is just kind of in reference to both riff coaching situation. I'm not addressing coaching directly because I know you already went through that in this portion of the meeting, okay? Um, as a parent of a student currently enrolled in the district, an educational assistant, a previous employee of the district and a teacher in training, I want to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to work within a community that values education. I feel compelled to respectfully share my growing concern that in practice, students are not consistently being prioritized in key decisions. From my experience, choices around resource allocation, staffing and classroom support often seem to reflect operational convenience as opposed to student well-being and learning outcomes. I deeply respect the challenges faced by the board and administration, but I urge us all to refocus on what's most important, ensuring every decision directly supports the growth, safety and success of our children. They're the most important to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to, uh, on my, my request to speak up and be as part of the, the riffs. And uh, name is Kathy Trivio. And um, I believe that there, if there was other options that could have been taken, that a um, the teacher's position that was ripped uh, could have been handled a different way. So uh, I'm requesting a copy of the uh, curriculum for PE grades K through twelve. Uh, and I want to see the standards and benchmarks that are followed. And then I'd also like to let this board know that at the time when my granddaughter uh, as far as dean in PE, the youngest one, um, she got hurt in PE. And my understanding is that there's no real uh, the PE is not anything that's uh, actually uh, there's anything followed, you know, that, that the kids are just pretty much thrown out there. Go run and play and whatever you want. If uh, and it's my fault, my granddaughter came home and she had a big old knot on her head. And she wasn't sent to the school nurse or evaluated for a concussion. Well, that's why I am formally asking for a copy of the curriculum for PE that was followed for the twenty-four, twenty-five student.
Thank you. Opened in business. MSBA leadership retreat.
We did include in your packet um, the information on the school board retreat. Um. I didn't think anybody would be interested in attending, but I wanted to make sure that I can get the opportunity if you're interested.
Hi, this is the same request that I have brought before the board in the past. Um. The New Mexico administrative code says that we are required to um, deposit funds received within twenty-four hours. Um, and it says that if the distance to the bank is considerable or the cash collection is limited to small amounts and or low volume and it is impractical, impractical to meet the twenty-four hour one day deposit rule, the local board may request an alternative plan from PED.
Well, we've done it in the past because it isn't quite impractical.
Yeah, we used to do it once and not again. And then with our previous audit firms, they brought it to our attention that it is required annually. So it's the same letter that we sent to PED earlier.
Title one, LEA parent and family engagement policy.
This is the same policy that you all approved um, last year at this time. The only update is changing this year.
Your board policies and procedures governing special ed. Sperry? I think that's what that big binder was. Just highlight the changes.
Yeah. I'm starting from the beginning to end. Here, that's for you guys to look over if you want. I'm just gonna um, highlight some of the changes. I didn't have time to print that side about this. So um, assistive technology, um, they just made some housekeeping and it's just going over the um, free and appropriate public education. Um, in the diet, the diet request, they may ask for technology and the student will need that for their food. Design. The next one is um, this one, I, I kind of went through it somewhere changes, somewhere little word changes. One of the ones that stuck out to me because I know we have that, we dealt with that. Um. Who we can invite to an IP meeting. It can be a, it doesn't have to necessarily be a parent and we don't necessarily need um, a legal document. If a grandparent enrolls, we can call the grandparent when necessary or uncle, cousin, whatever, whoever they're living with. Um, in for an IP in a room, in order to get the kid their needs, their needs met. Child find, we have, we have to reach out to a community and have at least one child find a year, which we do in the spring. Um, we follow the state's procedures for that and um, and we usually call, we kind of, I like, in my mind, I go down every street in town and we reach out to every family and try to get, get them here. And that's the big change in that affect us. Any questions?
All of that, that's all.
Some were like, they changed is and and it's like a lot. I was going through it and through and I'm like, yeah, you guys don't want to hear all those. Any questions?
What do you have?
Stay there, who's the applications next? Oh.
IDB, yeah.
So actually, all I have, I don't know if you have anything specific on the, so um, I think she went over her information on that part last meeting. And so then all I have on my part is this interest thing to be saying that I spoke with you about this. That's all. And then I have it right there.
Thank you. All right, other business, superintendent's report.
Uh, Ms. Wick has an update on science adoption.
I'm really sorry, I can't sit down. I'm having some back issues. And so if I seem like antsy, it's because it doesn't hurt if I'm standing and moving. So I'm not sure what sleeping tonight's gonna look like, but um, I can't sleep standing up, moving. Um, so a decision was made for six through twelve. We're still working on elementary, but um, even if they were to pick the same book, they can just roll right in or they have the freedom to pick the other book. But um, Ms. Andrea French and Denise Trillo, we kind of went back and forth today and talked about some things and we'd had some time at a literacy concert, art concert, I wouldn't conference um, to kind of talk about some things too. But we have decided to go six, twelve with the open SIA. And so each student would have a consumable book. And then they have kind of a, like a lab type book where the instructions are given, but then the material that they write in is here. Um, there's a huge online component for the teacher. Uh, this particular module, how can sound make something move? It starts with like a um, a vehicle with the bass really going, so the kids kind of relate to that. It's, it's relevant to their world and the windows are shaken and you know, um, and so it's everything just seems really relevant. And I think they've really done their homework on students. There would be six modules per grade level six, seven, eight. And then at the high school level, there's fif- sixteen modules to get through in the high school years. And so um, if you kind of picked and choose, kind of some things maybe not necessary in high school, um, but it's really But it's really a great program. I mean, um, state testing is always a huge thing. And this particular publisher has really focused on. Claim, evidence and reasoning, which is a huge part of what the state test is asking. So if you claim that bounty really is the quicker picker-upper, what's your evidence? Not just, well, I saw it on the counter, um, tons of graphs, data collecting. And things that really make science. Kind of overlap with math, and then finally, then what's your reasoning? And so I think. This program really teaches kids how to think. And so regardless of content, sometimes, you know, like. Having a child memorize the periodic table is the dumbest thing on the planet. And you understand how the periodic table is set up. Is far more important than knowing where titanium is located. Um, and so I just really think that this is a. A good source for us, um, great stuff. From our literacy conference that we just got back from, um. This program shows a great overlap of science, math and ELA. And all of the standards and benchmarks from the next gen that are covered there. So. There you go. I mean, I guess you could say no, like, go back to the drawing board. Um, I did leave in the, um. Lounge old boardroom, like samples of all the other books. And I'll put those in there too, if anybody wants to take a look at them, but. Like all the biology are all open to photosynthesis, so you could see how each one kind of covers it. For the science, for the high school, for this, um, it's on my computer, but if anybody wanted to see it, I'd be more than happy to meet with anybody and. Show you what it looks like. But. I'm, I'm really excited. Takes a lot to. Get me excited about teaching science. So I don't, it'll be, if we can make it, if we can make it work, then it's gonna be a great. I think our kids are really gonna be well-prepared science. And math and ELA as an overlap. And I will get with Tori tomorrow and start talking price and. Baiting for deals and. That kind of thing. Any questions?
I know you've done a tremendous amount of research and diligence and. Thank you.
I have, I tried, and, um. And I just, I think to the, like even the high school are small books. And I just think that's so less daunting than when you like slam that big giant biology book down and it's like, we're gonna cover all of that. And already, they're like, ooh, but somehow, like. When I break down little projects at home into small pieces, just makes me feel a little more accomplished when I get them done, so.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Right, my.
That is all I have to leave today.
On to item number ten and consent agenda. Alternative deposit request, anyone? But Mr. Casper, seconded by Casey, all in favor, say aye. Title one, LEA Parent and Family Engagement Policy. By Ms. Galley, seconded by Casey, all in favor, say aye. I oppose, say. Adoption of board policies and procedures governing special ed changes. By Casey, seconded by Shar, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say. IDA, B, application. Scally, seconded by Casey. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say. Next board meeting is delightful first at six thirty PM. Nothing further, let me change motion to the. All in favor, say aye.